Welcome everyone to the public forum for the Rutland City Board of School Commissioners. And tonight, we are taking this opportunity to hear from the public regarding the mascot issue. So first off, thank you all for joining us and I'm sorry, I think, I believe all board members are in, are present?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So all of the school board commissioners are present. And so we just wanted to review the guidelines for tonight that everyone should have seen when they signed up, when the meeting was worn. So that today, October 6th, is Rutland City Board of School Commissioners' Public Forum Regarding the Representation of the District Schools Through Symbols, Monikers, and Mascots. In order to, to view and or speak in the forum, members of the public have previously registered through a link in the Zoom platform. A recording of the meeting will be available in compliance with open meeting law, as long as technology cooperates. The Rutland City Board of School Commissioners welcomes public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to express their thoughts and comments to the board. The board will not engage in public discussion or dialogue at this time. The guidelines below are subject to modification in the board chair's sole discretion per Robert's Rules of Order. Please know as well that in order to allow students the opportunity to share their thoughts, there'll be a limited number of speaking slots available to students. And board chair, myself, will recognize members of the public from a list of those that requested to speak. And each person will be allowed to speak only once on the topic. And there will be a two-minute time limit per speaker. All speakers must yield to the timekeeper and Joanne, the clerk, will have the timer on her screen. And so that will show us our two-minute limit for each speaker. And let's see, lastly, the school board expects each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully present their comments or concerns, especially when in disagreement with others' views. Speakers will address their comments to the entire board, not an individual board member, the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. So next up, I'm going to turn it over to Joanne Pensac, the clerk, and she is going to read a statement from the Vermont Principals Association.
Thank you, Allison. So here is a statement we received from the Vermont Principals Association. It's called the Vermont Principals Associate, a Statement on Mascots and School Symbols. It's dated August 28th, 2020. "In, in support of the Black Indigenous and people of color students and families and other historically marginalized people, the VPA's Executive Council issues the following statement regarding school mascots. School mascots are often powerful symbols within a community. We believe that mascots and all school symbols should support feelings of belonging and inclusivity for students and the wider community. They should not perpetuate divisive stereotypes and contribute to the ongoing marginalization, erasure, and harm to BIPOC communities. Any mascot, nickname, symbol, or logo that has marginalizing racist or exclusionary elements should be replaced to demonstrate what it means to be an inclusive, welcoming, and strong community. Just as all aspects of school operations need ongoing improvement for equitable outcomes and inclusive representations and policies, so do, so too should school mascots." So that is a statement from the Vermont Principals Association. And then I'd like to read the school vision, the Rutland City School Vision. "Rutland City Public Schools cultivates a passionate, diverse, and resilient community of critical thinkers who learn with purpose, create innovative and responsible solutions, and lead lives of integrity." And then the mission of the Rutland City Schools is, "We empower students to be accomplished individuals and community members. We will deliver a comprehensive and engaging curriculum for a diverse student body, promote a safe and healthy environment that fosters mutual respect, and address the social and emotional needs of all students. Students will take responsibility for their education, develop their intellectual, creative, social, and emotional and physical abilities, be productive members of the school and community, every student, every day." And then Allison, if you could read the school board goals, please?
Certainly. So the other thing that the board is overseen by is our school board goals are "to promote a district climate that, open communication and collaborative decision-making, and support and monitor district efforts and promote continuous learning growth for students and staff." So thank you for reading those, Joanne. So the statement from the Vermont Principals Association and the vision and mission are, you know, documents and guidance for the school board and obviously members of the public as well to consider as we enter this discussion. So on your screens, you should see, before we delve right into it, there's a timer, two-minute timer there. And clerk is going to act as the timekeeper and each person will be given two minutes. And then the clerk will give a 10-second warning. And then at the two-minute mark, the feed will be cut for the speaker and then we will move on to the next speaker. So that is our, our plan as far as moving through the meeting. And so we have a list of people that had registered and so, and it's just in the order that people had registered as noted in the, in the process. So I, I'll let the first two people know and then I'm going to go over just some, some key points to consider. So just so these two people can, can start thinking. So first person on the list is Melinda Kimmel and then on deck would be Rachel Black. So, and then we'll, we'll give you a warning as, as we move through this. So key points for civil discourse, number one thing is to assume positive intent. Also, you want, we want to create a welcoming environment for different opinions. And we ask that you be attentive and considerate for all points of view. Give each speaker your full attention and process what is being said. We request that you listen with an open mind, listen for content of what speakers are trying to convey, listen to a variety of evidence, and find common ground or areas of agreement. And lastly, be mindful of your own behavior, tone, facial expressions, body language, and don't embarrass yourself or disrespect others by making demeaning or inappropriate comments, expressions, or gestures. Okay, so I think we are, and then also ask that each person state their name and their residence. And it just can be city or town of residence, we don't need your street address. So I think, are you good to go with the timer, Joanne?
I think so.
Okay, excellent. So first up, we would like to welcome Melinda Kimmel.
Okay, we're going to have Melinda do what we call allowed to talk rather than promoting to panelists. Hold on one sec. Let's make sure we got her. Melinda, are you there?
I just unmuted.
All right, you're on.
Hi, my name is Melinda Kimmel and I live in Rutland City. I am a member of the Rutland High School class of 1980 and I've been working for Rutland City Public Schools for over 15 years. And I am in favor of keeping the Raider name and logo. While I respect Ms. Groky's right to be heard to state her beliefs and opinions, I and over 2,000 others have that same right. What I've learned in the past few months is that I can only control my reaction to something. An arrowhead is neither good nor bad, it just is. The Raider name does not single out any particular group of people. It identifies one whole student body. I don't know what was in the minds of reporters 60, 70, 80 years ago when they used language we now consider derogatory, but my guess is it was to sell newspapers, plain and simple. At the beginning of COVID, this community came together. Administration approved the sale of Raider Strong t-shirts. Are those shirts now worthless? Are my already strained tax dollars going to pay for new uniforms, leatherhead billboards? What sacrifice are we going to make to pay for the proposed changes? Staff, books, supplies? Finally, my niece, a senior at Rutland High School, can't go to school with friends, has a shortened sports season, can't attend football games, feels uncomfortable wearing Raider gear. She and others like her don't want one more thing taken from them. Please support my niece and the other 2,000 citizens who want to keep the Raider name and logo. We are Rutland Strong, we are Raiders Strong. Thank you.
Thank you. So next up, we're going to have Rachel Black and on deck is Caleb Dundas. And just as a kind of timeframe reference, we do have 29 people that are registered to speak, so.
So here comes Rachel Black. Rachel, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hi, my name is Rachel Black. I'm an alumna from the class of 2009. And during my four years, it would have been hard to find someone who was more involved than me. Whether it was Student Council, Model UN, environmentally conscious and active club, or helping lead my sports teams to victory, you could say no one took the role as a Raider more seriously than me. Yet in the wake of the murder of George Floyd, I couldn't help but reflect on how much education matters and started reflecting on my time at RHS. While I do not have an Indigenous background and can't speak to being educated in a school that uses a poor representation of my people as their mascot, I can speak to being a student of color in a predominantly white school. And let me tell you, it is hard. There is no one else who looks like you, student, teacher, or administrator. I faced microaggressions every day, whether people spoke to me in made-up Asian languages, pulled their eyes up or down, asked me if I was adopted, or commented on how exotic I looked. This experience is not unique. The stories I've heard from other students of color are similar. I constantly told myself that these things weren't said or done to be hurtful because these people were my friends, colleagues, and leaders, but out of ignorance and a place of privilege, of being the norm. Rutland as a whole is not a diverse community, but we have the responsibility to raise our students with an understanding of the world and life outside of RHS. Changing the racist Rutland mascot is one way to do this. Starting a difficult conversation about something we identify with and take pride in is hard. But these conversations are happening all over the country and it's time for Rutland to face its muddled past. This is why I started this conversation and I am proud of how far it has come. I am proud of the team that has gathered, of all the skills my community has nurtured, and of all the voices we have heard. I'm a proud native Rutlander, I'm a proud Rutland High School alumna, but I'm not proud of her because I see no pride in that. I know that we can do better and be better for the community and for the adults we are nourishing. It is time to retire the Raider mascot and moniker. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. So next up is Caleb Dundas and on deck is Marissa Key Faber.
Okay, here comes Caleb. Caleb, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, I'll start now. Hi, everyone, my name is Caleb Dundas and I'm a current senior at Rutland High School and I'm a Rutland resident. I support changing the mascot. The current mascot, I believe, has no place in a public school.
Caleb, stay close to your mic, you're fading in and out.
Okay, I support changing the mascot. The current mascot has no place in a public school because it is not designed to honor the culture it's taken from. The mascot was chosen by newspaper writers, not the school members, in a time where blatant racism was deemed normal in sports broadcasting and even boosted audiences. Writers could engage audiences by using horrific analogies such as the action of quote, scalping an opponent to represent an athletic victory. Articles from the Rutland Herald have this sprinkled throughout them over the past century. At this point, how can anyone defend the mascot by saying it was chosen to honor the region's Indigenous people? How can a public school honor these people? The state it is run by was simultaneously trying to wipe out the population of these people through a state-sponsored eugenics program. It simply cannot. It is time everyone realizes that the mascot was chosen solely to catch attention with its bigoted and controversial undertones. The mascot has already been changed once because the administration recognized that the quote, Rutland Red Raider, an imagery of a native wearing a headdress, was just too racist. If that was unacceptable, how did switching the image but keeping, representing that same culture as quote, Raiders solve anything? I think that in order for our schools to have a reputation of equity and justice appropriate for a public institution, we must demand that the mascot is changed immediately. I yield my time.
Thank you, Caleb. So next up, we have Marissa Key Faber and on deck would be Whitney Pratt.
Stand by, I'm finding Marissa. Here she comes. Marissa, are you there?
Hello, yes, I am. My name is Marissa Key Faber. I live in Rutland City and I graduated from Rutland High School in 2010. I now work at Rutland Town School and teach 5th grade, social studies, and ELA. Part of my job as a teacher is to create a positive learning environment where all of my students feel comfortable and heard. Rutland High School has an opportunity to make this happen. Right now, as we've heard Rachel say, many students experience microaggressions and even overt racism daily. Using the mascot of the Arrowhead and the Raiders name does not create an inclusive environment. We need to watch out for all of our students, not just the norm, in this case, the white students. It is our job as educators and caring citizens to make this change in respect for all of our students. I really appreciate you, the board, taking this opportunity to hear the community and being willing to listen and make this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. So next up is Whitney Pratt and on deck Samantha Cohen.
Okay, here comes Whitney. Are you there, Whitney?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so my name is Whitney Pratt. I am also an alum. I was from the class of 2010. And I'm also here to speak to ask the board to please consider changing the Rutland mascot. Just for a little bit of context, I am from Rutland, born and raised, and I wore the Rutland Raider mascot for three sports a year, all four years that I was in high school, and I wore it with pride. My father also wore that jersey, except when he wore it, it had the stylized, somewhat fictional picture of the chief with a headdress on. And my father actually wore that jersey as the last, as the captain of the last boys' basketball team to win states for Rutland until 2017. My aunt also went to Rutland High School. She, the 50th anniversary of her graduation was the same year as my graduation from high school. My grandfather and my great uncle also went to school in Rutland and they actually benefited from a wealthy Rutland benefactor who put them through medical school and they returned to Rutland to practice medicine for their entire careers. On my mom's side of the family, we also are from Rutland. My grandparents were dairy farmers and their parents are from Rutland before them. And I say all this because I am proud to be from Rutland and my family is proud to be from Rutland, but we're not proud to have the Raider mascot and the Arrowhead mascot. And so I'm asking that we change the mascot out of respect. Respect for the people who lived on this land way before my ancestors came here and respect for the people who still live on this land. Because the Abenaki and Native American people still live in Vermont and the current Arrowhead and Raider mascot are not, are not respectful of them. So I please ask that we change it. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you very much, Whitney. So next on the list is Samantha Cohen and then I have on deck Jessie Wilson.
Okay, here comes Samantha Cohen. Samantha, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. My name is Samantha Cohen and I was educated by the Rutland City Public Schools from kindergarten to senior year. When I was an RHS athlete, I identified with the Raiders mascot because it was part of belonging, a part of my school pride, and my school spirit. I had to go elsewhere to learn about racism and what it means to foster a climate that values mutual respect and dignity, the exact goal outlined by the Rutland High School Mission Statement. Although the mascot today doesn't intentionally symbolize racism, its racist history is shameful and it is up to us to acknowledge this and fix it before we can create an RHS climate that values both mutual respect and dignity. As an economist today, I want to touch base on the cost of changing the mascot. There have been some folks who are worried about the burden to the taxpayers that changing the mascot might bring. I ran some numbers using the fiscal year 2021 school budget, the inventory of team jerseys seen in the 2019 RHS yearbook, and the average cost to replace a jersey. So these are all estimates, making assumptions, but can hopefully paint a picture of how we can eliminate cost to the taxpayer. I found that about only one-third of the RHS sports teams will need updated jerseys or equipment if the mascot were to be changed. These teams have a 2021 budget of almost $7,000 for the supplies. Given the average cost of a jersey, updating these teams would cost nearly $18,000, which would leave $11,000 gap outside of the budget. But I think these funds could be achieved by other, by means other than the tax dollar. If the dues that the students have to pay each season go to purchasing new jerseys for one year, it would offset the cost to taxpayers by about $8,000, leaving $3,000 unfunded. The school could balance this $3,000 through replacing jerseys when they would need to be replaced anyways, which would incur no additional cost to the taxpayer. Also, the school could fundraise, seek donations, or programs such as the one offered by Adidas to make these changes for high schools. Thank you all for your time.
Okay, great, thank you, Samantha. So next up, we have Jessie Wilson and then Nell Reese on deck.
Stand by, here comes.
Can we just remind them to state their residency?
Jessie, are you there?
Yes, just a reminder, state name and town of residency, please.
Jessie, I just tried to unmute you, you are here to talk. There you go. Can you hear us?
Am I still here?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So hello, members of the school board, my name is Jessie Wilson. I am an '09 alumna. I recently moved to Portland a few years ago, but before that, I lived in Rutland. I was co-captain of the varsity lacrosse team and in 2009, we won the Vermont State Championship. As I state my support to change Rutland mascot and to acknowledge that we are on unceded Avanaki land, I do it proudly as a community member and as a Rutland athlete. Pride has been an important part of this conversation and it is important to recognize that pride in the current mascot is misplaced. We're taught Native history like it's ancient past, but it's very much a part of our current reality. Vermont's legal system forcibly sterilized Abenaki people up until 1957 because we supported the idea that Abenaki lineage was bad genes and needed to be eradicated. This is not ancient history. At the same time, Rutland High School is calling itself home of the Red Raiders, using a chief's head as a mascot, having students dress in full regalia, swinging the tomahawk chop, referring to conquest and whiggums in their sports coverage. Abenaki people in Vermont, the original and ongoing stewardess of this land continue to face oppressive paternal legislation at both the state and federal levels. So how can we claim to be proud of something while harshly denying people's existence for our benefit at sporting events? We will continue to perpetuate this legacy as long as we exclude this history from our curriculum and connect our pride to this mascot. My pride in my team is because of how hard we worked. I am proud of our success and I will forever be grateful for my experience. My continued pride all these years later wouldn't be erased because we recognize the racist history in the current mascot, but instead, my pride would continue to grow knowing that my alma mater and the community that it lives in took the opportunity to do better and to be better. It is time to show up for our Native students and it's time to change the mascot. I yield my time.
Thank you. So next up, we have Nell Reese and on deck is Amanda Pagano.
Nell, are you there?
Yes. Hello, I am Nell Rice and I live in Cleveland, Ohio. I graduated from Rutland High School in 2010. As I prepared the statement, I reflected on the two perspectives I bring to this issue. I am a Rutland High School alum and a proud RHS athlete. I played three sports all four years, I attended RHS, I played in two state championships and I even won one. I loved my time at Rutland High School and I credit my confidence and my work ethic to the experiences I had as an RHS athlete. So yes, I loved being a Raider and I will never deny the amazing impact these teams had on me. I learned so much from my teammates and my coaches. The second perspective I bring is that of an educator. I am a middle school ELA teacher in Cleveland, Ohio. In the past five years that I've worked in this diverse city, my understanding of the world and as a white woman has changed drastically. I now understand that the inherent comfort I felt walking through the hallways of RHS, the very same comfort that allowed me to grow into a successful adult, is not afforded to every student. There are many students who go to school each day with an overwhelming sense that they don't belong. And we must be honest in this moment. White supremacy and racism has insidiously infiltrated all aspects of our, our society for generations. It is now our time to right the wrongs of our past. It is undeniable that the use of an arrowhead and other Native American imagery is appropriation and perpetuates negative stereotypes, while also alienating a specific group of students and community members. The Rutland High School Mission Statement reads very similar to many across the nation. It promises to provide a safe and healthy environment that fosters mutual respect. If we aim to uphold this mission statement as true for all students as it is written, then we must do all we can to ensure that all students feel safe and valued. What better way to communicate this than by changing the mascot to be more inclusive? Rutland High School is not alone in this debate. Many schools across the nation are making similar decisions to create a more inclusive and welcoming school community. It is my hope that we can join the group of schools and school leaders who are bravely advocating for everything, especially those who have been marginalized for generations. I respectfully remind you that this is your opportunity to progress our community towards a more just existence.
Thank you. So next up, we have Amanda Pagano and on deck Samantha Tupker.
Okay, here comes Amanda. Are you there, Amanda?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Amanda Pagano and I am from Rutland City. I am also the originator of the online petition to save the Rutland High School Raider name. The petition was shared as a way to make people aware of the proposed change to our community. As of today at 4:45 PM, the petition has 2,027 signatures and 598 comments from many present and past Rutland community members. I feel this volume of voices need and deserve to be heard. I wish all 598 could be read, however, I am choosing to share only one of the comments with the board this evening. A comment written by my daughter Kennedy Pagano, RHS class of 2015. Kennedy wrote, "I wore the Raider name proudly across my chest for four years. During this time, I was able to win two state championships, a New England championship, and place second at NCAA High School Nationals. The established Raider name allowed me to go on and cheer at a nationally ranked collegiate level. During this time, I earned two third-place and two fourth-place finishes at NCAA College Nationals. This year, I also had the amazing opportunity to help assist coach the six-time state champion Lady Raiders. I have never been anything but proud to represent the Raider community. In addition, my grandmother, my mother, my father, and myself have all graduated from RHS as Raiders. Keep the name alive and may the Raider legacy live on. In conclusion, I would like to say please support saving the Rutland High School Raider name. We are a community born in tradition, the quintessential small-town Friday Night Lights kind of place. Let's stand up for what we cherish and hold on to the comfort and stability of that hometown feeling during this very uncertain time." Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Amanda. So next up is Samantha Tupker and then on deck Jonathan Bassett. I should apologize in advance if I massacre anyone's names.
All right, Samantha, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sam Tupker and I'm calling in from Essex, Vermont. I'm a proud RHS alumna of 2010, but I'm not a proud Raider. I'm here tonight to speak in support of removing the Rutland mascot and nickname. If you had asked me my thoughts on this topic when I was in high school, I would have been confused. I would have stood here and asked why this is such a big deal. I would have looked around and thought, who is this mascot hurting? It's not hurting the majority, then why isn't it an issue? I stand here before you to tell you that since graduating high school, I have changed my mind and here's why. Rutland High School has an enormous responsibility and opportunity to support young folks in acknowledging and addressing unjust systems. This starts by listening to voices who have historically been silenced. The 2,500 people who have signed the petition to save the Rutland mascot have been heard throughout all of history. It's time to listen to everyone, not just white people. If you are sitting here today thinking that this mascot honors Indigenous people, then you simply have not listened. Native culture should be honored. Changing the mascot does not mean that there's nothing to honor or appreciate about Native culture. Rather, it sends the message that we are listening. When asking Native people if the mascot honors them, their answer has been clear. No, it does not. So we as a society can no longer give this argument any merit. As white people, we do not get to decide what does and does not honor Native people. That decision is not up to us. I understand that loss of tradition is a loss and my words will not try to convince you that your fears and upset are not just and not connected to this loss. Loss of tradition, loss of simplicity, loss of comfort. Thoughts of changing the mascot may make you mad, sad, worried, may make you think that this world is changing too fast. However, it's imperative to note that while this change may make you feel all of these things, it does not make you question your worth. It is clear in speaking with and reading the words of Native people that this mascot has made them feel invincible, has made them question their value as a human. For this reason, we need to prioritize- For this reason, we need to prioritize the integrity, worth, and value of Native people while acknowledging the sacrifice of comfort and power of white people.
Five seconds.
These two things are not equal and should not be treated as equal. Every student should feel welcome. Changing the mascot would not impact white students' feelings of belonging, and we must name this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So next is Jonathan Bassett, and on deck is Jill Stegerwald.
Jonathan, are you there?
I'm here.
We can hear you.
My name is Jonathan Bassett. I'm here to speak in support of changing the Rutland High School mascot. I was born in Rutland and spent my formative years there. I played sports all four years at Rutland High School with five varsity letters in football and hockey. I was captain of both All-Star football teams my senior year and won a title my junior year. I opened there because a lot of the opposition I've heard to this issue is regarding geography. Quote, "The people who want the change aren't even from Rutland." The fact that I currently reside in Austin, New York doesn't make me any less from Rutland. This same issue came up in Austin in 2002, when the State Education Commission requested all schools with offensive mascots be changed. Austin had been the Indians for 73 years. After deliberation, the name they settled on was the Pride. How fitting. Pride is something I've also seen in opposition to changing the Rutland mascot. I just don't see it that way. Yes, I had pride in being a Raider, but the real pride was in being from Rutland. Recently, an article was posted in The Herald calling for movement to change the name propaganda, quote, "by a very small group of people looking to take away our freedoms, history, and traditions away from us." To the author of that piece and anyone who shares his views, that history, those freedoms and traditions, don't belong to you. They belong to the Indigenous people of this land. Those people have been, have living descendants who attend schools like Rutland High School. Scientific, peer-reviewed studies show that Native American mascots make Indigenous children feel lesser than. The most basic element here is children feeling lack of self-worth over things imposed by adults. 95-plus percent of Vermonters don't have a child of Indigenous descent. 95-plus percent of Vermonters don't have a child who wanted to raise a Black Lives Matter flag because they didn't get seen. 95-plus percent of us will never know the feeling of a young minority kid swimming in a sea of people who don't look like them. I certainly don't. As adults, when children are crying out for help, our response can never be get over it. We need to do better. We need to be better. Change the name.
Ten seconds.
I cede my time.
Thank you. So next, we have Jill Stegerwald, and on deck Jacob Pluta.
Hello, can you hear?
Jill, are you there? You got you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Greetings, school board members. I am a 2003 graduate of Rutland High School and currently live in Colorado. I am proud to have been raised a Rutlander, and now, as a youth development professional, I care about future young people from the Rutland area gaining more consciousness and awareness of social justice and equality issues than I did when I was at RHS. As you know, the mascot conversation is a big one nationally right now, as professional teams, colleges, and schools alike are reviewing their mascot and logo choices. State-level initiatives to ban mascots have been successful in Maine, Oregon, and Washington, and are ongoing in Massachusetts, Illinois, and Wisconsin. Discussions are finally starting across Vermont now, too. Currently, 91 schools in New England use Native imagery for their mascots or logos, with names like Indians, Warriors, Tomahawks, Redskins, or Raiders, according to the New England Anti-Mascot Coalition. This summer alone, several school districts in Massachusetts announced changes, including the Grafton and Hanover Indians and the Quincy and Barnstable Red Raiders. These regional examples are just a fraction of the schools that have already let go of mascots like these going back decades. These schools recognize that Native mascots cause harm by affecting Native students' self-image and self-esteem, and by perpetuating the idea that Native people exist only as caricatured stereotypes. They also recognize that changing mascots will positively benefit students of all races and backgrounds, lining the way for a more conscious and educated population of their communities and of the world at large. In front of you now is a chance to do the right thing. You have a responsibility to current and future students and to the community as a whole, to model that words and images matter and can cause harm. Inclusion must be a priority in organizations and institutions that support young people, and facilitating equitable experiences for all students must be the goal, even if that means letting go of traditions and curriculums that have been around for generations. Please rise up and join the school districts around the country that have chosen to address this need for the right reasons at this opportunity. Don't be one of the last 91 schools in New England to make this important change. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. So next up, we have Jacob Pluta, and on deck Sarah Allen.
One second. Jacob, are you there?
Hi, hello, everyone. Thank you to the school board for hosting this forum. My name is Jacob Pluta. I graduated from Rutland High School in 2006, where I certainly received a quality education. I live in Killington, Vermont now, and my parents, who are both career educators, live in Menden. We come from an ancestry of European immigrants, the late 19th century, early 20th century, who chose Rutland as their new home. I'm a huge sports fan. I played varsity golf a few years ago as the assistant coach of the snowboard team at Rutland High School. 2017, I drove up to Burlington to watch Rutland end its 50-year varsity basketball championship drought, and I just want us to be able to continue to celebrate and honor the generations of athletes who have worn the Rutland colors with pride, but recognize that the name change is something to look forward to for our generation, for generations to come. I called a university friend who was the captain of the varsity lacrosse team at McGill, which is a year... He told me that McGill dropped the name Redmen as their mascot, which I didn't know. McGill Athletics announced this change after listening to students, athletes, including those from Indigenous nations. So I want to share a quote that was given to the Change the Mascot group by Don Stevens, who is the chief of the Nauhhegan Ban of the Kusakabeneke Nation. He said this, "We do not support Native mascots outside of Indigenous schools. Regardless of the intention behind the mascots, it is simply not appropriate for Europeans to characterize our people and continue to use our culture for their own purposes, even if well-intentioned. We have a rich existence in this land and have a lot of things to share that would benefit society as a whole." So I just ask that the school board consider changing the name. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. So next, we have Sarah Allen, and on deck Jacob Pousner.
Sarah, are you there?
Hi, I'm here. Hopefully, you can hear me.
We can.
So I agree with the many people who have spoken in support of changing the Rutland mascot, and I agree with all the reasons that they have given for this change. I am Sarah Allen. I am a Rutland City resident and proud to be so. This mascot is inherently racist. It does not honor Native Americans, and it's not unique to us, since many other schools, as have been said, with similar mascots in New England have or ha, have started reflecting on these poor choices that they had made in the past and are making steps to change. I hope we can be one of those schools. The monetary costs to change are minimal in comparison to an entire school budget, and the benefits to making sure that all students feel comfortable and not diminished in the school are invaluable. I think honestly, a real way to recognize and honor Native Americans and remind others their historical presence in the area would be to include a land acknowledgement at the beginning of public meetings and activities associated with the school and town. Rutland School is still, Rutland High School, is still going to have great athletes and athletics if we change the mascot. We're still going to have wonderful students. Great things are still going to happen. The mascot does not make these athletes good, does not make the school good. There are so many reasons why I'm proud to live in Rutland and why I love this community, and I think that changing this mascot and any symbols related to it would just to continue to improve Rutland's image and Rutland High School for the students in it and for the community at large. And I hope you strongly consider changing it, and thank you so much for hearing all of our thoughts. I am all done now.
Thank you, Sarah. So next up is Jacob Pousner, and then on deck is Ann Lezak.
So I will step in. Jacob Pousner is not present. No Jacob, no Pousner, no anything close to that. So I'm going to go to, who did you say was next?
So next, we have Ann Lezak, and on deck is Eris Sherwood.
Okay, stand by. Let me find Ann Lezak. All right. Ann, are you there? Can you hear us?
Unmute. Okay, now, do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First, I, oh, I live in Burlington. I was pushed out of Rutland because my husband took a job there. I still am very connected to the Rutland, greater Rutland community. We raised our kids in Menden. First, I want to say how inspiring it's been to see former and current Rutland High students who've taken on the cause of promoting, changing the RHS mascot, and initiating a district-wide equity plan, as well as honoring the Vermont, Vermont's Avanaki people. As the parents of three RHS grads, I remain proud of the school and feel like my, my now-grown children gained a lot from their time there. They had some great courses and teachers, reveled in being part of sports teams, and made lifelong friends. All three of them strongly support changing the mascot. My daughter Alyssa, in fact, asked that I mention that she'd never even heard of the Avanaki people until she left Vermont, and that, you know, there was a big disconnect between the mascot and what she learned in school. We now have the benefit of greater awareness of the harm that mascots like the Raiders have on stereotyping and marginalizing American Indians and, here in Vermont, our own Avanaki people. Schools all across the country are recognizing that these mascots are out of step with respecting and welcoming all people in our communities. Many, many have changed over the past decade, and as we heard, the VPS came out with a strong statement in support of changing offensive mascots. This change is inevitable. Doesn't Rutland want to be a leader on this issue rather than to be pushed and dragged into making this meaningful and positive move forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. So next up, we have Eris Sherwood, and on deck Tricia O'Connor.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, my name is Eris Sherwood. I'm a resident in Rutland Town, and I'm class of 2018. What we know about the word Raider is the connotation of attack. In combination with a Native American and arrowhead logo, it elicits uncomfortable feelings among members of our community, and we don't have a right to say they are wrong. Rutland City has made progress by removing the word red, and the Native American logo has been changed, and for that, we thank you. But it wasn't enough. My class of 2018 shirt has an arrowhead emblazoned on the front, implying that the logo is still being used to this day. This, along with the present use of the name Raider, draws implications to Native American culture, which many people in our community find disrespectful. Caricatures of elements from other cultures do not have a place in our halls or on our playing fields. Now is the time to start listening to the people of our community who have felt like their voice hasn't been heard. We will no longer tolerate racism, microaggressions, and implicit bias in our community. It is our duty as white people to listen when a person of color speaks and follow when a person of color leads. We do not have the right to tell them their feelings are wrong or invalid. We do not have a right to dismiss the plea, to respect the people that built the land we stand on, because it's tradition. We need a change that puts forward the needs of current students and students of the future so we can ensure our schools are a safe, comfortable, and inclusive place for all. If eliminating the Raider mascot and removing all traces between the city and the imagery and implications of the symbols is the first step to ensure this, why is that so much of a problem? I once heard, "Change is often painful, and when making changes is the most difficult, it is usually because it is the most needed." That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Eris. So next up, we have Tricia O'Connor, and on deck, we have Heather Juliansen Stevenson.
Finding Tricia. Hang on.
Thank you, Rob, for all your effort and help here.
All right, here comes Tricia O'Connor. Tricia, can you hear us?
Hello. Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I am a Rutland City resident. And at the September 8th school board meeting, there were speakers on your panel that expressed they had a distaste for the current Rutland High School mascot. And this discussion resulted in my questioning the perceptions and feelings of other members within our community, where the sentiments presented during the board meeting representative of others within the Native American culture. So in my quest to have my questions answered, I contacted a Native American Indian with direct ties to the Rutland area. This person, Wendy, spoke on behalf of herself and her mother, Dee Brightstar. Interestingly enough, the image of the arrowhead evoked different emotions for her than those of the speakers featured in the prior school board meeting. She stated that the arrowhead was used to hunt and to ensure the survival of the Native American Indians. In fact, she reported she considered it a source of power, strength, and energy. She went on to further, she went, she went on further to state that America is made up of a melting pot of cultures, and the use of the arrowhead acknowledges that the United States was built on the decks of the original Indigenous people, which were the Native Americans. I then discussed with her the hadris caricatures featured in the school yearbooks and the perception that they were considered insensitive. Her response was as follows, "It is far from insulting. I consider it a symbol of strength and bravery." This positive example highlights the importance for further discussion within the community as individual perceptions are just that, individual. Certainly, the community as a whole should have the opportunity to weigh in further on this topic. Perhaps this proposed change-
Thank you, Tricia.
-revisit it.
So next up, we have Heather Juliansen Stevenson, and on deck is Harry Chen.
Okay, here comes Heather. Heather, are you there? Try to unmute. Let's see. Unmute. Just a second. Trying to get her unmute. She's there. I can see her icon. I just can't... Unmute. Try one more time. Heather, are you there?
May I try?
Yeah, please. Go ahead, Tricia. I think she may have dropped off.
She has allowed to talk on...
Are you with us, Heather? So I think maybe in light of time, we'll keep moving through the list and then circle back. Is she not on, connected at all, or?
She's there. We, we have a, I'm going to try. If you don't mind, I'll try one more thing.
Okay. Yep, sure. Just let me know when we should circle back or move on.
All right, one more try. Heather, are you there? Okay, don't see her. So I suggest we do move on.
Okay, so we are going to move next to Harry Chen, and on deck is Craig Hahn. And so then, we will go with that and then circle back to Heather.
Okay. Here comes, Harry, are you there?
I'm there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. So thank you for taking up this important issue. I speak to you as an emergency physician at RRMC for over 25 years and as the former commissioner of health. Public health is what we do as a society to create the conditions for health. Racism is a public health issue, period. The Rutland Raider mascot is a symbol of the racism that has characterized American culture throughout its history. Racism has taken its toll on the Native American population. For example, during the pandemic, they've suffered three to four times more infection than their white counterparts. In the Navajo Nation in the Southwest, it saw 75% of New Mexico's cases, even though they represent only 9% of the population. Racism is not only a problem for Native Americans and Alaskan natives. You only have to look at the poisoned water in Flint, the lack of clean air in safe places that play in our northeast cities, the epidemic of violence and incarceration in young black men, the epidemic of substance abuse and chronic disease that has shortened the lives by over four, 5.5 years in Native Americans. You might wonder how all of this could be related to the Rutland mascot. To paraphrase the late Martin Luther King's letter from the Birmingham jail, "Injustice anywhere is injustice everywhere. Injustice to one is injustice to all." The Rutland High mascot is a symbol of racial injustice to Native Americans and ultimately to all Americans of color. We're at an inflection point in our history, and it's time to take action. Change the mascot and implement an equity curriculum. It's an important step forward to change the narrative and embrace the public's health. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. So I- So I guess I skipped over Jacob Pousner, so we're gonna add him back in. So, ne, sorry.
I was gonna say, he was, at the time he was up, he wasn't, he wasn't, he was in and out, and he's back in, maybe we can add him at the end.
That's right, okay. All right, so I guess we'll add him back at the end, okay, all right. So next, we have Craig Hahn, and then we'll circle back to Heather.
Okay, hang on, let me get Craig. Stand by, Craig. Whoops. Craig Hahn, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm not a Zoom person, so I don't know, I'm, this was one of my first times learning how to use this thing, so. But everything's cool, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, I don't have a whole lot to say that hasn't already been said. I'll be honest with you, there's a lot of different opinions out there. For people who want to keep the Raiders, I do. By the way, I'm a Rutland citizen and not a public speaker. But the arrowhead has been used by every culture everywhere in the world since the Stone Age. It's a fact. It's not just a Native American thing. I, I get the red Raider thing, I don't really get the arrowhead thing. However, I'm not really stuck on the arrowhead as a logo. However, the term Raider, I am in support of keeping. The term Raider was used everywhere in the world also. But because, because I don't have a lot of time, I'm just gonna show, I'm just gonna share a few examples of American Raiders over, over history. There's corporate Raiders, Tomb Raiders, the Las Vegas Raiders, Edson's Raiders, Carlson's Raiders, those are two special divisions in the Marine Corps, Doolittle's Raiders, if you don't know who he is, or they were, look them up. And maybe the most famous American Raiders that almost nobody knows about, the Five Raiders of the Revolutionary War, consisting of Paul Revere, Sybil Londonington, Samuel Prescott, Israel Bissel, and William Dawes. Again, look them up, it's a great story. It wasn't just Paul Revere that made the ride, and they were known as the Five Raiders. But again, not exclusive to Native Americans. Just a couple more things, though, I know I don't have a lot of time left. There's 2,000 signatures on the petition, online petition. We also have another 700 hand-signed petitions, and-
Ten seconds.
-it's a little over a week. So folks, we're gonna be knocking on your door, the petition's just getting started. Save the Raiders, go Raiders.
Thank you, Craig. And so we're gonna circle back to Heather, and then on deck is Jack Arthur.
Let me see if I can get Heather again. I'm not showing Heather right now for some reason. Give me one second to see if I can retrieve her again. I think Heather has disappeared. I'll keep an eye out for if she comes back. Jack is next.
Yes. So Jack Arthur is next, and on deck, Sharon Corcel.
Jack Arthur. Here comes Jack, are you there, Jack?
I hope I am.
You are, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Well, last month, just be prior to the September 8th meeting, oh, and I should add, I am a Rutland City resident, I'm sorry about that. So last month, prior to the meeting where you discussed the mascot, I contacted every one of the school board members, now you probably know what I look like. And I, I made two points to you. First of all, you got a pandemic and a school crisis going, a budget that's down the toilet, and here we are talking about the mascot. Of course, there's a lot of people in town who would like to keep that mascot, and I being one. There are budgetary concerns, and there's public issues, public health issues, that the administrators, I'm sure, are struggling with this year. And I'd have to guess, being formerly in education, that this probably is one of the worst years for, for the school system, and I think we have a gaping budget hole. I see this as a very, very divisive issue. I'm not gonna kid you, I think it will divide the city, and I think the fact that we have petitions out there indicates that. My other concern, and I told you this in September, was the amount of activism that revolves around this issue, and it, it seems to be a continuum from the Syrian refugees, the Black Lives Matter, and I, I would like to see a K to 12 system that isn't politically active. Now, there were some students in there, and there were people who were former alumni, we heard from a lot of them, but I do get a very big sense that Rutland High School has become a very, very political place. I wouldn't be surprised if the staff is divided.
Ten seconds.
Beg the administration to get a handle on this, so RHS is politically neutral. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. And next up, we have Sharon Corcel, and on deck, Marsha Castle.
Here comes Sharon Corcel. Sharon, are you there? Stand by, Sharon. Sharon, can you unmute?
Sorry about-
Try again, sorry. There you go.
Okay. Right, okay. Hi, how are you? Thank you. So I, I just had a few things I wanted to say. I'm in favor of keeping the Raider name, and for a lot of the same reasons that Jack Arthur just brought up, which, which worked out well that he came right before me because I didn't realize what he was gonna say. So all of what he said. In addition, you know, it, it, one thing that's bothered me continuously is that the article that was written, well, the speaker and then several articles that I saw from Cicerino, and alluding to the way that the name came up, I know that the arrowhead was brought on later on, but how that the reporters were obviously racist and/or maybe just potentially trying to sell papers, which I wouldn't necessarily disagree with. So I thought, well, I'm just curious, was it, was it on purpose that that, the reporters' names were left out? Or, you know, was it, you know, just that it wasn't looked up? I'm not really sure. So I thought, well, I'm gonna just check into it and see who those, who, who was around then, not having been from this area and not really familiar with the Herald and, you know, its history. And, and what I found, William H. Field and his son William, 1927 to 1947, which covers a great deal of the years with, with remarks from Cicerino's article, was one of vastly increased professionalism. I'm reading from Wikipedia on, on the Rutland Herald. So, you know, Bill Field engaged a distinguished typographer to redesign the paper, resulting in a famous, you know, national awards. Mitchell took over, Mitchell took over in 1948.
Thank you, Sharon. Next up is Marsha Castle, and on deck, Annie Daly.
Marsha, are you there?
Indeed, I am.
We can hear you.
Castle, I am a Rutland City Public Schools employee. My son was a proud graduate of Rutland High School in the class of 2012. Multiple things can be true at the same time. The Rutland mascot name and images serve as a unifying metaphor, symbolizing command and strength and achievements, championships, community. It's woven into sentimental reflections of good times and nostalgic stories and defining moments. Rutland Raiders is an alliterative moniker that conjures up a collective identity and a sense of belonging like any other mascot. Also true, the Rutland mascot serves as a painful reference to the narrow stereotypes and mischaracterizations of native people as primitive, uncivilized, savage, cunning, and violent. Native peoples have been traumatized, in some cases slaughtered, separated from their homeland, sequestered, and prevented from enjoying full and prosperous lives in this country. The debate about keeping or changing the mascot, I believe, is helpful to examine the idea of intentions and outcomes. We might not intend to denigrate indigenous people by using the Raiders as our mascot, and yet, despite the lack of malice, our choices still can hurt. We are not exonerated by benign intentions. You could also argue that we've erased the most offensive caricatures and that the name doesn't have any residue. But yet, how can you ignore the narratives that talk about the despicable treatment? And our Raiders, unlike the generic Raiders, can trace their origin back to this history, and it's unsettling. There could, of course, be, there would be financial considerations. We're creative problem solvers. There could be backlash that could jeopardize the security of employees, and that would be tragic. There's a lot in a name. Ask Nissan about Datsun. Ask centuries of women who've changed their name in marriage. The story's not over.
So next up, we have Annie Daly, and then on deck, Gillian Stevens.
Annie, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening. I am Annie Daly, I live in Polkney, Vermont, and I am calling in to support also changing the mascot. I'm calling in, I know as I'm not a Rutland resident, but I'm a resident of Rutland County, and an educator, and a teacher, and a mentor to students in the region. I'm calling in support of the change because as someone who listens to the next generation and what they're saying, what I'm hearing is, it's time for a change. Specifically, this mascot is very much representing the past and something that we should move forward from. I think our job as leaders, educators, teachers, and mentors in the community is to really hear our youth and what they're saying, and also to continue to try to eliminate white supremacy and its pervasive nature in our everyday lives and places that we are. Octavia Butler said, "All that you touch, you change; all that you change, changes you; the only lasting truth is change." And so I wanted to call and echo and support the folks, and remind everyone that growth and change are a part of our everyday lives, and that if we want to move forward and continue to provide more inclusivity, as the Principals Association says in their statement, we should listen to the youth that are asking for this change because it's hurtful to them and others in their community. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you, Gillian. So next up, sorry, I think I forgot to give a warning on this one. So next up, I have Erin Epps, and then on deck, Becca Booth.
I think we have Jill Stevens next, because you did Annie Daly just then.
Sorry. Thank you, Rob. So Gillian Stevens, and then Erin Epps is on deck.
Gillian, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Jill Stevens, and I live here in Rutland, and for transparency, I also work for Rutland City Public Schools. I'd like to thank the Rutland City School Board members for hearing my concern and our community's concerns, and thank the many students, former students, staff, and other community members who started this petition to change the Rutland mascot, drawing attention to this important issue. I'm also here to give my support to changing the Rutland City Public Schools sports team name and logo. I support changing the name and logo so we can be more inclusive and respectful towards Native American community members, not only here in Rutland, but in all of Vermont. In the years that I've been living here in Rutland, I know that we are full of creative, intelligent people, and I believe that we can do better when developing a new team name and logo. Thank you, I see the rest of my time.
Thank you. So then, next up, we have Erin Epps, and on deck, Becca Booth.
Erin, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Good evening, thank you to the board for hosting this forum and allowing me to speak. My name is Erin Epps, and I am a Rutland resident. At the board meeting last month, I shared my experience of moving to Rutland and the unease that I felt when realizing that my new largely white community was represented by a Native American imagery and a mascot with a demonstrably racist history, as some of the previous speakers have articulated. What I didn't share at that time was why this made me feel uncomfortable. So I moved here after teaching and living on the Rosebud Reservation, and I taught at a tribal, tribal school, and before that experience, my opinion of Native-inspired mascots was mixed. I felt that if done respectfully and in a non-stereotypical way, that mascots could be a good way to recognize and honor a brave and beautiful culture. However, that opinion quickly changed. After one of my classes, we read and discussed an article about the Florida State Seminoles mascot. Florida State has worked closely with the Seminole Nation to help provide scholarships and community resources to tribal people, and so I thought that that was a fair trade-off for them to be able to use the Seminole mascot. My students disagreed, all 20 of them, and for anyone who works with youth, can you imagine 20 teenagers agreeing on anything? Their message to me was loud and clear, their mascot, those mascots are offensive, harmful, and racist. The power of the experience has taught me that even well-intentioned white people do not have a complete understanding of the impact that certain policies, experiences, or in this case, imagery and narratives can have on our non-white brothers and sisters. And that's why I'm here this evening, it's not about my opinion, but rather the opinions of my Lakota students. For that reason, I humbly ask you on behalf of those students to change the Rutland mascot and use this as an opportunity for reflection and a fresh start. Thank you.
Thanks. So next up, we have Becca Booth, and on deck, Tom DePoy.
So I'm not showing Becca Booth or Rebecca Booth or any name that ends with Booth, so I think we have to go past Becca.
Okay, so then next up, we'll have Tom DePoy, and then we will circle back to Jacob Pousner, and then see if we can catch Heather at the end.
Yep, here comes Tom DePoy. Tom, are you there? Tom?
I am here.
We can hear you.
Great, thank you, Rob. Thank you, Allison. My name's Tom DePoy, currently sit on the Board of Alderman of Rutland City. I made a motion to allow the people of the city of Rutland to partake in this process via non-binding vote at our next city meeting in March of 2021. While this forum is a start to the public input process, in no way will it be accurately representative of not only our community as a whole, but Raider Nation as a whole. The many people I've spoken to about this issue are vastly in favor of keeping the Raider name, the arrowhead, and in fact, many of those want the Chief and the Red returned to Rutland High School. The vote in March will deal with the current issue of the Raider name and the arrowhead. The new Board of School Commissioners will be tasked with making any changes to the mascot and symbols. This vote is strictly advisory. In listening to tonight's forum, I couldn't be more convinced that the skids are greased and the vocal minority is incredibly organized. I do not believe now, as I didn't believe when I made the motion to put this issue on the ballot, that this forum would be accurately representative of the people of Raider Nation. This is not a racist community. The Raider name is not racist, and RHS will remain the Raiders, I believe. Those activist teachers who continue to attempt to divide this community need to be stopped now. My motion passed on a 7-3 vote on the floor of the Board of Alderman and was sent to committee for discussion. The BOA is awaiting the conclusion of this forum to take up the issue in committee and make a decision whether to send this to the voters or not. I encourage those who are-
Head second.
...available to speak with Board of Alderman members, to encourage those Board of Alderman members to allow it to go to a vote.
Thank you, Tom. So next up, we have Jacob Pousner, and then on deck would be Heather, if we can reconnect.
Jacob, are you there?
Oh, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Great, oh, well, I'd like to apologize for my connectivity issues before. I'm up to Chettonen, and I'm here to speak and support to change the mascot. First off, I guess I'd like to thank the district and the board to carve out this public forum. I think that's super, I think it's super great, you know, to kind of take this- to kind of take this issue and really hear from the public and hear what folks have to say on the issue. I know everything is busy going on. But I'd like to acknowledge that, you know, the, the land we're talking about, Rutland, is the traditional unceded land of the Ybenneke people. And the settler colonialism that has forced those people to outline communities, and many of those people still live in Rutland, that settler colonialism still continues to this day through what we heard about earlier about forced sterilization programs. And it continues into the discussion we're having about the Raider mascot. So I, I'd like to engage further in this public forum. As it moves along, I think we're really headed in a good direction where we can choose a mascot that reflects our better selves and, and the best in the community. And, well, thanks for hearing me, appreciate it. And I'll, I'll see the rest of my time.
Thank you, Jacob. So last, we are gonna try to see if we can get Heather on.
I, I still see no Heather.
Oh, I'm here. Can you hear me?
There you are, we got you, how'd we do that?
Thank you, I'm sorry from before before. I live in Rutland on Lincoln Avenue. I have a PhD in history and I don't teach in Rutland, but I have taught in Vermont schools. A lot of people have talked tonight about the harm that's being done to people of color with this mascot. And it does harm Native Americans. When whites can masquerade as Native Americans by wearing Native names and imagery, it makes it easier to forget that some Native Americans actually live today in some of the most impoverished conditions in the country. They're among the heaviest hit by COVID-19. According to the National Congress of American Indians, Native Americans are 2.5 times as likely to suffer violent crimes as all other races. And young Vermont, young Native Americans are far more likely to have, to commit suicide than any other race in this country. Only 5% of natives have received graduate or professional degrees compared to 10% for the total population. This matters to my family. We regularly contribute to the American Indian College Fund and other groups that address the disproportionate challenges faced by Native Americans. We believe that this is how you honor Native Americans. But it's easier to forget about the problems, the systematic problems that Native Americans face when a white person can put on a Raider jersey and pretend to be a Native American. The Native mascot erases Native Americans and replaces them with whites. This harms Native Americans, but it also harms whites. It teaches me, a white person, to harden myself against the harm I'm doing to someone else for the sake of entertainment. It encourages a lack of empathy that is unhealthy for community. This decision tonight belongs to the democratically elected school board. Supporters of the mascot had every opportunity to be here tonight. A backdoor process meant to subvert that, this school board's power is systematic racism at work. I encourage you to change the mascot. There's nothing political about doing the right thing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Heather. So that concludes our list of everyone that was registered to speak tonight. So I wanted to, you know, thank everyone for their time and thoughtfulness in coming before the board and the board for being here and listening. And so with that, we'll close our session here. And again, thank you, everyone.